I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Matter of fact, please hold on.
Trustee Bell.
Here.
Trustee Brewer.
Here.
Trustee Grant.
Here.
Trustee Tuck.
Here.
Trustee Wiggum.
Here.
Okay. Item number four approved.
United States of America, I would like to make a motion to, uh, go into executive session to, uh, talk about litigation and present litigation.
Second.
Heard the motion. Ready questions? That's part.
Trustee Bell.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Wiggum.
Yes.
Motion carries. Charles Pondexter, thirty-two, Mary Vernon Drive.
Mr. Mike one.
It is.
Okay.
First comment, I'd like to thank the police department for coming out last week. We had a pit bull that was ready to go out and wild and, uh, they came out three times and they quartered the dog and we got the dog captured after biting someone. So Chief, I thank you and your staff for that. Uh, another thing, I was reading through the agenda here and I see, uh, something about getting rid of the directors of Tanya McCoy. Uh, you know, I've been working with Tanya since she's been here and she's a bright, intelligent woman. She's been helping me out with a lot of things with economic development and I've been working with her on these. I think it'll be a big loss if we get rid of someone like her. John Jinko.
I read something in the paper a while back about Sock Village not paying pension bills. Where do we stand with that? There's some of that almost like the village is going to be bankruptcy or that we ain't paid for three years.
I didn't hear the first part.
But the pension.
Oh, pension.
Are we still in trouble with that or big trouble, little trouble? Just curious to see what's happened then. And then I guess last week we had a meeting that I thought you guys were going and that these type of meetings will be held at the end that we would be sitting out there waiting for you guys to come back out. Is that still in the works or just curious? Thank you.
Okay, um, there's, um, the pension, um, that was, that's part of the, um, in the budget. And that's police and fire pension has been a long time it's been underfunded. So right now we've been trying the last two years, two and a half years that I know of, trying to add extra money to the pension because we are far behind. We're not going bankrupt on what that's even put out there, but I did, I know that was somebody put that on Facebook or whatever, that the village is going bankrupt, the village is not going bankrupt. But we are behind in our pension and we're trying to catch up with you quite naturally. It didn't happen overnight, so we can make it happen or take or catch up overnight. Um, as far as getting rid of, uh, Ms. McCoy, was it was, there's something in here tonight about a position, uh, because she has dual positions, she's an interim. So they were talking about getting rid of her per se. It was talked about abolishing that position that she happens to hold as far as an interim. Um, the executive session, that was talked about last week also that, um, it would be on an ongoing basis. If it's something that's could be done quickly like tonight, we could do that. If it's going to be something that's going to be dragged out then we can ask for it to be put at the end. And, uh, the board talked about that last week, how that, how that could happen. So, that being said, um, going to reports. First of all, I want to thank everybody that came out yesterday for the veterans' celebration. Uh, the weather was a little constrained and, uh, but still, these are veterans, they know how the weather is. They've been through worse than this, so I appreciate all those that came out, um, yesterday for that celebration. And then, um, just wanted to say, uh, thank you very much for the, for the people that helped make that happen. That's one of the rees that were there that we've had for two years now. So hopefully we can keep an attack until it does fall apart, but I appreciate everyone that was involved in making it happen. Um, that being said, I'll go right into, uh, village clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one, um, report to make and really it's an announcement and that is to ask all of the trustees and everyone else that's within my voice to reach out to anyone that you know who is homeless or who may be in need, um, and would like to enjoy a Thanksgiving dinner with us that will take place here Saturday on the sixteenth. We're going to start at two o'clock. We have the village of Steger who has offered to provide coats, so we will be distributing coats to those who are in need as well. We will have a full course dinner that's comparable to anybody's wonderfully well adorned Thanksgiving dinner on china, not glass china, but plastic china. And, uh, it's going to be very nice, so even if some of you would like to come, you're more than welcome. And if you would like to put on a black apron, anyone, you're more than welcome to do so too. And if you decide to put on that black apron, I just ask that you wear black bottoms and a white top. That means you will be volunteering. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. That completes my report.
Thank you. Okay, I, you said a black bottom or a black?
Black bottoms, white top.
Okay. That's Saturday, Saturday to?
I'm sorry, just Grant reminded me that we have another event taking place this week also. We have deputy voter registration and we need just a few more people to sign up. Believe it or not, it's a joint venture between three different organizations and can you believe we do not even have twenty people yet? That's sad. It is Thursday here in the rotunda at six-thirty.
Um, next item, village administrator, Mr. Williams.
Good evening, court fair authorities and village. I'm just giving a brief update. I've been having some successful meetings with the state, county, and also some of our regional partners to try to see, um, what type of resources we could bring here at the village regarding some, uh, projects with that. That's all I have to say for now.
Village attorney, Mike McGrath.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I would just like to report, uh, the conclusion of the village's case, uh, that we've been working on over the last couple of months. As you know, we, uh, my office, we went to court to seek a temporary restraining order to enforce ordinance nineteen dash zero-one-one, which gave the village board the authority to hire the village's village administrator, along with enforcing the contract between the village and Christopher Williams. After reviewing both sides of the cases, uh, legal arguments, the judge entered, uh, the temporary restraining order. We went back to court a few weeks later for a full evidentiary hearing where witnesses were called to testify and exhibits were entered into evidence. At the end of that hearing, the judge entered a preliminary injunction, again in favor of the village board stating ordinance nineteen dash zero-one-one was a lawful ordinance and the village board had the authority to contract with Christopher Williams. The case was continued for a hearing on a permanent injunction, uh, between the last court date and, uh, within the last couple of weeks, the parties conferred and we've reached an agreement to avoid future litigation, meaning to avoid additional legal fees paid by the taxpayers to enforce, uh, the village ordinance. Attorney Greg Mitchell advised our office that he was prepared to file an appeal of the court's earlier rulings and to further contest the village ordinance at future hearings on the permanent injunction. Had attorney Mitchell filed an appeal, the defense of defending the appeal would range between five thousand to ten thousand dollars, uh, on behalf of the village's. Had this case proceeded to another hearing with witnesses and exhibits, that hearing would have cost the village thousands of dollars in additional attorney's fees. Rather than waste additional village funds on a case that the village had won twice before and that we certainly would have won again in the future, the only rational and fiscally responsible thing to do was to settle this matter to avoid those costs. As a result, the parties agreed that a permanent injunction be entered, copies of which I have for you tonight. This order, as it is titled, is a permanent injunction or ruling by the court that ordinance nineteen dash zero-one-one is a lawful and valid ordinance, as is the contract with Mr. Williams. It was further agreed that attorney Mitchell's legal fees would be paid by the village at a reduced rate and, uh, at a total lower than what attorney Mitchell requested. While I stated previously that the village was not bound to pay attorney Mitchell's fees, had the key, had the case proceeded, uh, the village would have incurred additional legal fees in excess of what attorney Mitchell will be paid, uh, by the village. And that's all I have.
Okay. Village engineer, Mr. Jim Donner.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, the board will be voting to move forward with the 2020 MFT program and the TIF bond improvements project. The 2020 MFT program consists of general maintenance activities such as snow and ice removal, tree trimming and removal, street maintenance, street lighting, storm sewer and structure maintenance, traffic signal maintenance, and sidewalk repair. We estimate the maintenance program to cost about one hundred and five thousand dollars. The 2020 MFT program also consists of roadway improvement. This year, this will consist of removal and replacement of culvert on two-hundred-and-twenty-first street between Chappelle Avenue and Clyde Avenue. Metal culvert is rotting away, causing collapse of roadway over the culvert. The metal culvert will be replaced with a concrete culvert that is much more corrosion-resistant. We estimate this project to cost about two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. All MFT program costs will be paid for utilizing MFT funds provided to the village by the state. The TIF bond improvements project consists of a number of improvements to TIF two and TIF three. The improvements consist of pavement projects, water main replacement projects, and elevated tank repainting project. We estimate the TIF bond improvements project to cost about two-point-five million dollars. This project will be paid for utilizing bond funding gained from refinancing the annual TIF funding provided for TIF two and TIF three. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Judges report, Mr. Anthony Finch.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. My charge report today for the cash balance in the unrestricted funds corporate account, we have three-hundred thousand nine-hundred forty-eight dollars. Reserve is eight-hundred thousand. The special account, we have two-hundred-and-fourteen thousand seven-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars. The water sewer account, we have five-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand forty-nine dollars. The water sewer, uh, E-Pay account, two-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand eighty dollars. In the cell tower account, we have three-hundred-and-two dollars. We still, we still have available a line of credit of five-hundred thousand. Will give us available cash for operation of two-million-six-hundred-twenty-two thousand one-hundred-and-seven dollars. In the restricted fund, in the C-N account, we have forty-two thousand two-hundred-and-eighty dollars. The D-A, DEA account, we have one-hundred-and-three thousand four-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars. In the South Village housing account, we have one-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighteen dollars. In the tip account, we have six-hundred-and-fifteen thousand five-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars. The toll account, we have thirteen thousand six-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars. In the money laundry account, we have six-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars. In the drug spending account, we have twenty-four thousand one-hundred-and-forty-five dollars. In the money laundry spending account, we have eight-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars. And, uh, in MFT, we have three-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand three-hundred-and-ten dollars for a total of unrestricted funds, one-million-one-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand five-hundred-and-nineteen dollars. That concludes my charge report.
Thank you. Um, reports of, reports of, um, department, uh, Mr. Finch, you want to go right into finance?
Thank you again, Mayor and Board. In front of you, you have the accounts payable and payroll disbursement for November twelfth. Payroll as of October twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen was a total of one-hundred-and-thirty-thousand four-hundred-and-sixteen dollars and seventy-three cents. The accounts payable for this evening, November twelfth, is one-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand eight-hundred-and-forty dollars and nineteen cents for a total disbursement of three-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand two-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars and ninety-two cents. That concludes my department report. Thank you.
Thank you. Fire department, Captain Sittaway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Fire department responded to forty calls for service from October seventeenth through November seventh. There were no major incidents to report. Fire department also participated in the trunk and treat on October twenty-sixth. Many children and adults were happy to see the firemen and the fire trucks. Daylight savings time is now begun, or is now over. We hope everyone remembered to change the batteries of your smoke and CO detectors. During this cold weather, we hope that everyone checks on their weather on their neighbors to make sure that they are okay. Fire department also showed their support by attending the Veterans Day program here at Village Hall. And final note, there's still some paint left for distribution at the fire station. Personnel are there every day until six P.M. daily. That concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. There's, there's still some, I know that the public works had some paint left, so that's part of.
That was the paint that we had down. Public Works brought that down last week, so we've got, uh, quite a few gallic drugs and we probably got about, uh, twelve or so.
Last time I didn't even get a chance to say anything, it was gone in two days. There was a lot more than that. Thank you. Uh, police department, Chief Malcolm White.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, village board. Um, there'll be no statistical, uh, numbers available tonight due to, uh, issue with the system. However, um, I would like to, uh, update on the remodel of the police department. Uh, we have been able to, uh, remove, uh, everything necessary for the especially, except for one thing that the, uh, Public Works Department has to remove, uh, they have to destroy this certain areas. Other than that, the asbestos removal is, uh, on schedule for this coming Monday. Um, it's going to take about three days for them to seal it off, remove everything safely, and then we can move on to the next stage of the removal. Um, so right now that's where we're at. I'd also like to remind everyone once again, the third Thursday of every month, um, November twenty-first of November, uh, is going to, at six P.M., is going to be chat with chief. Make sure you stop in and, uh, we sit down and have some very heated discussions as well as, uh, some crime prevention tips and things, especially for this time of year, uh, when we're doing a lot of Christmas shopping and people are watching, coming and going from your homes. So, uh, this time of year especially, uh, this, this is the time that you definitely want to come to the meetings to try and get these additional tips on, on this, uh, just to be, to, to avoid being a victim. Uh, that concludes my, uh, report for the night. Thank you.
Right here. Village board. Public Works director, Kevin Weller.
Excuse me, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, staff is still working at two-two-two-eight gates. Two sticks of main have been installed at that location. One more left with the hydrant. Once completed, the boiler will be lifted. Uh, staff also completed the storm branch pickup, uh, from the last two weeks ago with the, the weather conditions we had. Uh, within the leaf canopy, we could not notice a lot of broken branches in the trees. We did take a few hazards out. We asked that if any residents noticed any branches that are broken, the trees, uh, laying hazardously in there, please call the village hall and, uh, make a report to the front counter. Um, we, we reported on a couple of poles missing at two-seventeenth and Jeffrey and two-seventeenth place sixteen-hundred, sixteen-oh-nine. Those were due to accidents. Both of the poles are upright at this time. We're still, have to put the arms, the lights, the power in any signage that was on the poles. Uh, we also had ordered five more poles for the other three locations in town that we have to put poles on. Uh, the leaf program, uh, was supposed to start today. Due to the weather conditions, uh, we're pushed off by one day. We're hoping tomorrow that we'll have a little bit of melting going on so we can push these piles around. Um, we're going to still work on the piles a little bit, even if we can't move them with some piles, to try to at least get some of the major piles off because every day after this puts us further behind and it puts us into December, which is even worse if the snow comes in. Uh, first storm, the cold weather events here, uh, Sock Village Public Works was called to two fire hydrant hits. Uh, one was out in, uh, Mark Collins, uh, pretty bad hit, it's leaking pretty bad. And the other one is Jeffrey in two-nineteenth place. Uh, the first one in Mark Collins is called in, will probably start on the work tomorrow, trying to locate the problem. Um, we're still working as a department, uh, definitely behind financially with the budget. We're waiting on some of that to go forward. Uh, we definitely have a lot of projects we've been asking for the last few years. Uh, one of them is, uh, new plow equipment and some new equipment to add to our aging fleet. Um, that is still behind. Uh, the work we're working on now, making sure that all the hoppers are finally working. Uh, we had a few, uh, for the storm that we used, but we're definitely have some issues with a couple of them. And finally, the south side shut-off list. Hopefully everybody's paid their bills, but the bill, the shut-off list will start tomorrow until completed. That concludes my report.
Uh, Kevin, the, uh, do you have a, is, the branch pickup is going on now, so, um, when is the last time that residents could put branch, I mean, leaves?
Um, leaf piles can be put out till the twenty-fourth. Um, we're just looking at that as a final date, but if we pass after the twenty-fourth, normally we'd give a week, they'd have a week to put them out. Being as we're starting a little behind right now and leaf drop just happened from some of the snow, we're going to give it extended to the twenty-fourth. But once we pass on the twenty-fourth, we will not be back.
Question.
Yeah, yes.
Kevin, did we ever get the, uh, the grader and that attachment that we, uh, that you asked for?
Yes, we did get the equipment, all the attachments, and unfortunately with the end of the season here, we haven't had a chance to use that piece of equipment. We have used the auger and we've started, uh, some of the other equipment, but we've used the skid loader quite off, quite a bit right now for some of the digs we've been on.
Thank you. Um, community development and, uh, community and economic development, uh, interim director, Ms. Tanya McCoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no report tonight. Thank you.
Okay, reports, trustees, standing committees, council, public safety committee, trustee Gary Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, next safety committee meeting will begin on the twenty-sixth of November.
It's your Michael.
Hello. All right, the next meeting for the safety committee will be on the, uh, the twenty-sixth of November. It'll be at the fire department, eleven A.M. Thank you.
Okay, uh, public service committee, trustee Bernice Brewer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You, uh...
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I have a short report. Uh, we have, uh, decided and I talked to, uh, you know, did I talk to Mr. Wind? Mr. Wind, we're going to, uh, draft up or design some small workshops for all, workshops for all the trustees so we can better understand what each department head is going to be doing. For, say, for instance, public works, we're going to have public works come in and tell us what's the status of things, what we could do to make their job and life easier, things of that nature. Uh, we haven't got it finalized yet, but that's what we're going to work for the first of the year on. It'd be a win-win for everybody and everybody could be on the same page. So, uh, I think the public is invited, but it's geared toward, uh, that the trustees actually know what they, you know, department heads are doing and what we could do to help them. That's the end of my report.
Okay, budget and finance, uh, trustee Roger Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, my only comment is that I believe maybe the next week or so, uh, Mr. Finch does plan to share with us the budget versus actuals versus how we're doing so far. I think we're six months in already, so we should have a better update of that pretty soon and we can kind of, you know, kind of hone in on those expenses where we, where they're, uh, probably not doing so well. Um, my other comment is that, uh, next Tuesday at the committee meeting, uh, I will present the finance policy procedures manual that the village administrator and the finance director did have a chance to review, so hopefully we can all discuss that on Tuesday. Actually, I just want to pass, present it Tuesday, we can discuss it two weeks later because I don't want to just give you something with forty pages and then, you know, you don't have time to discuss it. So maybe we can discuss it in two weeks after that, but I will give it to you on Tuesday. That's fair. Um, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Housing and the governmental relations committee, trustee Sharon Zeski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The housing committee will be tomorrow night at seven o'clock here in the boardroom. I also turned over the home inspection and rental inspection to trustee Tad for her committee to review. Thank you.
The ordinance review committee, trustee Linda Taz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the ordinance review committee will meet on December second at six P.M. here in the village hall. Um, I'm also going to be presenting at the committee on the hall, there's several ordinances that were discussed that trustee Brewer had brought to us and I will put that on the agenda for next Tuesday so you can be reviewed and discussed. And that ends my report.
Okay, you're going to get those through the, uh, question. Public events committee, trustee Debbie, Debbie Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Truck or treat was a great success. It did rain, it was cold. Uh, we were unable to do the, uh, walk from Rickover to the village hall, but we were successful in hosting the event inside. Thank you to the fire department and the police department for attending. And the Sock Village Veterans Day celebration on Saturday, I coordinated with Southland Voice. We had close to a hundred people here. It was also very well attended and the food was great and everybody had a wonderful time. There was lots of raffles and, um, everybody really enjoyed it. I also attended the Sock Village Veterans Celebration yesterday in the village hall here, also well-attended. Many, um, veterans from all different branches were here represented and I really appreciate the fact that we do that every year also. And the Holiday Craft and Vendor Fair, it will be taking place on November twenty-third at the senior center from ten A.M. to four P.M. We're looking for vendors. The vendor fee is twenty-five dollars per table. If you bring your own table, if you need a table set up, it's an additional five dollars. So people need to reach out to me in order to sign up for that and that's all I have at this time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Um, reports of committees and commissions, senior advisory council, chairman Emmett Farmer.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and trustees. Our next meeting for the senior advisory council is Thursday, November fourteenth at five o'clock. Always welcome. Also, come out and join us, uh, join our seniors for the breakfast bingo every second and fourth Friday from eleven A.M. to twelve P.M. And this, uh, this fourth Friday, November twenty-second, we have a special team for our seniors, Hope Street Health will be immediately, will be here immediately following bingo to do a presentation and will be catering here in breakfast, so please come out and join us. Also Medicare season is upon us, representing this matter, United Healthcare, Cigna. We'll be doing seminars on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday here in the senior center, watch the flyers posted around the building for exact timing. Also seniors, don't forget game night this Friday, November forty-fifteenth, and every first and third Friday. Come for card games such as vehicles and other games from six P.M. to ten P.M. Also committee members will be keeping vehicles from six P.M. to seven P.M. every first and third Fridays for those who don't know how to play. And that concludes my report.
Mr. Farmer, um, the senior advisory council meeting, is that all?
at this time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Reports of committees and commissions, senior advisory council, chairman Emmett Farmer.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor and trustees. Our next meeting for the senior advisory council is Thursday, November 14th at 5:00 o'clock. Always welcome. Also, come out and join us, join our seniors for the breakfast bingo every second and fourth Friday from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And this fourth Friday, November 22nd, we have a special team for our seniors, hope to be held. We'll be immediately, we'll be here immediately following bingo to do a presentation and we'll be catering here in breakfast, so please come out and join us. Also Medicare season is upon us, representing this matter, United Healthcare, Cigna. We'll be doing seminars on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday here in the senior center, watch the flyers posted around the building for exact timing. Also, seniors, don't forget game night this Friday, November 15th, and every first and third Friday. Come for card games such as vehicles and other games from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Also, committee members will be keeping vehicles from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. every first and third Fridays for those who don't know how to play. And that concludes my report.
Mr. Farmer, the senior advisory council meeting, is that on Wednesday or is it on Thursday?
Thursday, every second Thursday at 5:00 p.m.
Okay, so that'll be on 14th. All right, thank you. Unfinished business, I'll entertain a motion to override my veto of the 2019-2020 budget appropriation order.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Todd, second by trustee Juzinski. Any question?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to read the response to your veto message of October 22nd. In response to Mayor Burgess's veto message of October 22nd, 2019, vetoing the ordinance approving an annual budget and appropriations for corporate purposes for the village of Sauk Village, Cook County, Illinois, for May 1st, 2019 to April 30th, 2020, that was approved by a majority of the board on October 15th, 2019. The override to the mayor's veto is stated on Tuesday, November 12th, 2019, at the regularly scheduled board meeting. The budget will be in total effect upon approval of this override. Mayor Burgess stated on number one of his counts that there was no proper notice of the October 15th special meeting. The notice was in fact prepared by the village clerk and submitted in the normal fashion. The special meeting notice was provided to all board members and posted for the public. The special meeting notice stated the meeting was called pursuant to the Open Meetings Act by Mayor Burgess. I do have a copy of the special meeting notice if anybody would like to see it. Number two, it is disheartening that the mayor claims this budget is politically and personally motivated. Most disheartening is claimed that certain employees of color and their salaries are targeted. Number three, Mayor Burgess stated that the trustees who approved this budget are irresponsible, reckless, and squandering the taxpayers' money by not budgeting appropriately. The fact is, the majority of the salaries adjusted in this budget were positions that had been added to the budget in the past two years, some without board approval. Once the budget is made public, the residents can see for themselves which positions and salaries were in fact affected. Number four, the mayor claims that instead of working with him on ways both parties can compromise, those who voted for this action may declare there is no compromise, there is no negotiation, and there was no intention of working with the mayor on a budget compromise. That is false. Several budget meetings were held, including meetings with department heads. Meetings were contentious and fruitless, and the mayor offered no solutions to any practical budget cuts. The mayor canceled a scheduled budget meeting without providing another meeting date. The majority of trustees continued to propose solutions that were ignored. The burden fell on the interim finance director to work within the budgetary shortfall. At one point, everything the department heads requested was scrapped, and it was suggested that we go along with last year's budget. That was not an acceptable solution for a number of reasons. Number five and six of the mayor's veto, with respect to the appointment of the village administrator, the majority of the board feels that the qualifications of the individual far exceed the expectations listed in the job description. This individual has several years of managerial experience on multiple levels, as well as a degree in public administration and graduated magna cum laude. The village administrator does in fact work in excess of 40 hours or more, both in and out of the office, as he continues to handle the day-to-day operations. While in this role, the village administrator has worked to be politically neutral and work with all corporate authorities. Number seven, the mayor stated the trustees are squandering the line of credit in order to balance the budget. It was suggested by the interim finance director that we have three options to balance this budget: line of credit, reserve funds, or the water fund. There is legitimate concern from taking from either of those funds. Employees that work with water and sewer have their salaries paid through the water and sewer accounts. The remaining deficit can come from either of these three sources. Number eight and nine of the mayor's veto, the mayor stated that the majority of the trustees approved an action to provide a pay increase for one department head while other employees are forced to take a pay cut. That is not true. This budget only calls for pay increases that are provided within union contracts. No non-union salary, no non-union employee will receive an increase in this budget. Several unexpected expenses were added to a budget that was already in a deficit, such as the repayment of the Ozland grant, increased payments to both police and fire pension and the MWRD sewer mandate. The Ozland grant was received under the previous administration. Those funds should have been segregated. The trustees have asked for information tracking the grant process. It is still unclear exactly what happened. In this, we agree. A full investigation is warranted to determine exactly what happened with the grant money, and that criminal charges should be brought if so warranted. Number 11, with regards to the mayor's claim the trustees are squandering the taxpayers' money on legal bills, it is very clear that the threat of further lawsuits and the fact that the majority of the trustees had to take legal action to uphold the ordinance approving the appointment of the village administrator, even though the mayor himself signed the ordinance, is reason to be concerned about mounting legal bills. In addition, it is very disconcerting that the mayor relieved the village attorney from defending him in an action brought forth by a trustee due to the lack of information provided to the trustee. The mayor instead hired a law firm without board approval, whose fees are in excess of between $490 and $600 per hour. Number 12, the mayor stated there was an increase in the amount of $80,000 for human resources and a part-time HR assistant. This is not true. The village administrator will assume the role with the assistance of the current staff. No additional HR staff is included in this budget. Number 13, the mayor states that the trustees approved an additional code enforcement officer with a part-time salary of $25,000. That position is not in this budget. Number 14, part-time public works staff and part-time police officers were discussed prior to the budget. Part-time public work staff has been used in the past to assist with summer and fall programs. The current budget does not allow for part-time police officers or part-time administrative assistant in the police department. This, however, may need to be amended due to the current staff load. Number 15, the mayor stated again that the felt taken by the trustees who approved this action are clearly politically and personally motivated, premeditated, arbitrary, and capricious targeting his administrative assistant. We will not address this matter further at this time, other than to deny the allegation. And every department, not just administration, has suffered cutbacks that will affect the day-to-day operations of the village and how we service our residents. In closing, the majority of the trustees have worked towards compromise, but to no avail. The time has come to pass the budget. The budget is a working document. Amendments can and will be addressed when the budget to actual figures are released from the finance department. Being seven months into a 12-month budget, it will be very clear where we stand with this budget. A budget with a huge deficit, a deficit that has been passed from administration to administration. Through the years, several departments have faced cuts in personnel and equipment that they have never regained. It is a fact that staffing is the first thing to go. The majority of our staff are either union or unpaid, paid on call. Cuts have been made where cuts could be made. Further cuts will be recommended unless other options are made available. The budget takes effect immediately and will remain in total effect until amendments are made with board approval. And we are not eliminating the employee of economic development. There's another position for that very qualified person. Thank you.
Any other questions? Anna Clark?
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Bell.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Next one is the motion to approve an ordinance for appropriation of the 2019-2020 budget, and I needed an amount.
Mr. Mayor, I expressed to the village clerk earlier that there's no need to pass an ordinance. That ordinance already has been passed in its entirety with the amount on October 15th. There's no need to pass another appropriations ordinance. I can give you the amount that was passed on October 15th.
This is on the agenda, so you're saying that you want to strike this particular one?
Yes.
Is the board willing, just a second, is the board along with trustee Williams willing to strike item B? Start with trustee Todd. Trustee Brewer?
Yes, if the amount, you made it clear, the amount.
Okay, go ahead, Ma'am.
Thank you very much. The only thing that I can say is that on that day, trustee Grant shared with the board that the amount in one location of the appropriations was different from another that was read, and so it was then decided that it would come back before the board, once you review the actual figures, and you would then state what the figures are. The email that you sent me the other day, asking me to put it on the agenda, stated you would have the figures and you would read the figures into the record tonight. That's what we're asking to occur now. Thank you.
I would be more than happy to read the figure into the record, but there's no need to repass the ordinance because I listened to the tape today, and it was stated that the amount of the budget that was approved on October 15th is $14,237,356. That is the amount that should be in the appropriation ordinance. What we did say, trust, yes, sure, $14,237,356. I actually have a copy here with that figure inserted, if you'd like it, Madam Clerk. What we did say, Madam Clerk, you're right, that there are some amendments that are going to be made to the budget, but the budget passed that night as is in that amount that was provided by the interim finance director that Monday. No, but he provided a budget on the Monday prior to the meeting that included a different amount than what he provided to us the prior Friday. So the budget ordinance was passed in this amount. That's how the budget was passed on the 15th.
So, Mr. Mayor, so I was under the impression that when it's voted on tonight, it will come back before the board with the amended changes, because there's no point in passing the budget that we knew that was messed up, so we had a month to correct it. So I thought we were going to come back, because there were numerous things that I called out that I thought were wrong with it. So I thought tonight would be the night that those got corrected and with a new number.
No.
No.
No, that's not what we agreed to?
Mr. Mayor, the mayor vetoed the ordinance passing the budget. He vetoed an ordinance that was in place that night.
What I vetoed was the budget that was presented.
Right. So we are overriding the veto.
So you override the veto and you're passing the budget that was presented to me?
On the Monday prior to, I don't know, October 14th.
Okay, so that's what I've asked the question I asked.
Right.
And the question I asked was the amount. Now you're saying the amount is $14 million. Okay. I'm asking this board if that's the correct amount. You do not want to pass an ordinance for that amount, or you'd rather, that's the question I was asking.
We've already passed the ordinance.
So, but they just stated it, you even agreed on it, that there's some discrepancies in the amounts. There were some things that were not, and like you said, well, like the trustee said, it was given time to work those out, so that's the reason why I was asking that question.
If I could just add one more thing that I said earlier in my override to the veto, there are amendments that will be made to this budget, probably for the next five months until we get to the next budget. Things are coming through every day. We do realize that there's some situations that we need to address, but that doesn't stop us from passing the budget and overriding the veto that was in place on October 15th. The budget is what the budget was on October 15th.
That's why I asked, that's why I told the trustee, is that what you want to do, is to pass the $14,237,000, because there were some discrepancies, there were some things that were added and taken away, and the amount changed. That's why I was asking, I didn't see nothing on here. So do you want to pass this B, or do you want to take this off and not pass that and just go with the veto? That's the question I really originally asked. So I asked trustee Todd, she said you wanted to pass the, in other words, you want to go with the veto? Herman?
So you want the amount. So we've already passed this ordinance.
I'm asking for an amount so it can be put into the record.
Then we're going to put the amount.
So just restate the motion, that's all. Can we just restate the motion? With the amount?
Put the amount.
Okay. Do you want me to restate it?
Who made the motion? Because you have a question. Who made the motion? No one made the motion.
Well, actually, I had asked that we just remove this from the agenda, but I have no problem with stating.
Do you want to remove B, item B?
Because, yes, in my opinion, it's already been voted on. Can I ask?
But B, I need to have an amount to be put in for the record so they can know, so we can know how much has been appropriated.
Okay, the ordinance that was approved on October 15th for the budget was $14,237,356. That is the amount of the ordinance that was voted on and approved on October 15th and subsequently vetoed.
What did you have to say, trustee Brewer?
No, I was just going to agree with it, restate the amount and make sure it's in the record, the amount, $14,237,356.
Yes.
Make sure it's in the minutes, in your minutes.
So someone wants to make a motion to approve the appropriations for that amount, It was moved by trustee Williams, second by trustee Juzinski. Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So, again, so there was a month that went by that I thought we were going to come back with the correct figures this time and pass that budget appropriations. Because, for example, and I just remembered this off the top of my head, and I'm sure there's more, this one sticks out. So, for example, the fire department, I believe it's the chief. I believe in the budget, it had like, I won't get into figures, but incorrect figure. And in my opinion, because we're already, you know, six months through the year, technically there's no more money in the appropriations for him to get paid. So I thought the whole thing was to come back with correct figures and then pass that appropriations, because basically we're passing the same budget that we knew was wrong, that we had time to fix, that we didn't fix, but we're going to pass it anyway. So that was the purpose of tabling it. Well, I mean, it got vetoed, but coming back this time with the correct figures and passing that budget, like what was going on in the month? Like what happened?
And I understand what you're saying, because there were some things in the budget that were put in there, and I had questions with it. I said, so this person, it was put in the budget for $35,000 for the fire chief. Okay, he's gotten that already because that's half his year's salary, so therefore, you have to put something in there to do the other six months or five months or whatever it is. That was supposed to have been something that was supposed to be talked about. It was other things that were in there that if you pass the budget, then these jobs no longer exist because you change the salary. So that's why I asked, and that's what I thought may have happened, but so I'm not sure how this is going to be done, because the money, if you pass the appropriation the way you had it, there was a lot of holes in it. There was a lot of holes in it. And it was even stated at the meeting, it was even, even the board said that we would have to look at some of these things, and I thought maybe some of that would came back with some of the, some of the money, amount of money or whatever taken care of. But if you pass this amount the way it is right now, there may be some positions that may not be able to be funded, and that's what that part was.
And, Mr. Mayor, as I stated in the override to your veto, there will be some amendments to this budget. It's a working document.
But in the meantime, you're passing something that you know is not, is not, that you have a shortfall.
We could not pass a budget today.
I didn't say not pass a budget.
But we're going to pass the budget today. But, Mr. Mayor, amendments could be made. You could amend the fire department salary next week if you like. Amendments could be made at any time.
I can't amend anything, because every time I try to amend something, this is what happens. I'm asking the board right now, if you want to pass what you have right now, there will be some, there's some shortfall. There's some holes in it right now because it's not funded. And you had two weeks or whatever. If you wrote a diocese, you wrote 13, 14 questions, I would thought maybe one of those would have said, okay, we're going to add this to that, or we have to take away that. But that was never done. So passing what the budget that was vetoed had problems, and it was stated at the time that it had problems in it. Those problems were never rectified. We're still going to pass that same budget. And the only thing, I was reminding the board that if you do that, some of these positions won't be, won't have money for them.
You don't have to talk so loud, I can hear. Okay, 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 but you can still say it gently. Mr. Mayor, when you first called for the motion, trustee Todd moved that motion and trustee Juzinski seconded. The second time that you called for it... The second time that you called for it, trustee Williams made the motion, but Jazinski was the same second. So which one am I going to go with?
Okay, it was the first one did not have the amount.
So we'll go with the Williams, Jazinski?
The first one didn't have them, that's why I asked, because it didn't have them. Instead, the amount to be disclosed, it wasn't, it's not on here, but it was later talked about. So that's what the first motion was, to approve, um, the appropriation. Then it was said that we don't have to approve appropriation because you already approved the appropriation prior. Only thing I'm asking now is if you, and as far as something being changed or amended, I mean, that's not, if we was gonna do, if that was what happened, it would have happened between now and two weeks ago. So that's not happening. So all I'm asking is to make it clear that you're approving the fourteen million, which we already know has some holes in it. And at that point, that's when you have to start, um, looking at what's available and what's not available, because it is six months into it. The budget that you're approving is not a six-month budget. The budget that you're approving was a year budget, you just happen to be six months into it. So that's what I'm trying to get you to understand, that there were some positions that were six months into it, but you're only, but, but the whole budget is for a whole year and, and so those positions won't be, um, won't be paid for. If you, if you have a position that's, that's only gonna pay half the amount, half the amount's already been appropriated, then how do you go on with the other half that's not in here? I was hoping that between the two weeks that this was vetoed, that somebody would've came back and said, okay, well, we got to look at this. As trustee, uh, Grant said, that we needed to look at a few things and it wasn't done. So if you pass this budget, there's gonna be, uh, a lot of different things that won't be, um, paid for. And, 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 and they were talked about. These particular positions were talked about. So that's why, that's why I was just trying to make it clear. So when this budget is passed, certain things won't, there's no money for them. Okay, so, um, that being said, um, to make it clear that we're, we're passing for fourteen million, two hundred thirty-seven thousand, three hundred fifty-six dollars for the, uh, for the appropriation part. And it was moved by trustee Williams and seconded by Jazinski. Okay, Madam Clerk, call it.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
No.
Trustee Jazinski?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Item number C. Did I miss a meeting or when was this discussed to put this particular position back on the table? Cause I didn't, and I know I was here last week and I didn't, well, the last time we had a meeting, cause last week was the fifth, Tuesday. So when was this discussed? Just giving it to the trial, to, to the clerk is not a discussion. Anything you vote on, I would think that you would have a discussion. So I'm just asking the trustees, when was this discussed to take it off, cause it was tabled the last time and the last time was tabled, it was tabled with the trustee's approval? So now it's being put back on the table and then the other one after that is, is, is the ordinance to eliminate about deposition. I'm asking when was the item number C put back on the table and what meeting was that done, cause I wasn't at that one.
It wasn't done at the meeting, Mr. Mayor. When it was taken off the table, it was taken off the table to come back at another time.
Okay.
This is another time.
So who made that decision to bring it back on the table?
I made the decision to bring it back on the table.
Oh, you made the decision?
Yes, I did.
Okay. So, so you could add to having voted, have something voted on without the, at least the discussion of the board?
That's, what, when you propose an ordinance to the board, you propose an ordinance for discussion. Motion and second is made, discussion is held.
Okay.
The last time we had this ordinance on the agenda, you, you brought up some, some points that we needed to consider and we have taken time to consider those points. So at that time, we chose not to vote on it. At this time, we're ready to vote on it.
Well, you keep saying that famous word, "we." When did we talk about this?
We didn't talk about it at a board meeting, sir. Why does it need to be talked?
Because you would think your, 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 your residents would like to know, have some discussion on, first of all, it was, it was talked about at the board meeting to table it. We had discussion about tabling it. That was talked about in front of everyone. Now you wanna add it back for whatever reason? Cause I would like to know the reason why you're, you're, you're abolishing it, but when I even get there, I just wanted to know who made that decision. Now you say "we" and now you say "you." So which one was it? Was it you? Cause if it was just you, then I just wanna know. If it's we, where did we meet and how come it wasn't published? That we decided to put this back on the table?
I would be happy to address that question. Number one, the position of Economic Development Director is no longer included in the budget. Since it is no longer included in the budget, the position is being eliminated. The position was eliminated, was proposed within the last two years and it was placed in the budget at that time. The position is no longer in the budget. So when I say "we," I say when "we," meaning the majority of the trustees who approved the budget, approved the budget without an Economic Development Director in the budget. At that time, when we tried to eliminate the position that worked alongside with the budget, you brought up some points that we needed to consider. So we, the five majority of trustees who approved the budget, have discussed the idea of putting it back on the table. I didn't realize that we need to have a meeting to request that it's being put back on the table. When ordinances are removed, they can come back on the table at any time. When I submitted the request to the clerk, the clerk did not tell me that I needed to go to a special meeting or any type of meeting in order to bring it back on the table. The ordinance has been placed back on the table. And I said "I" because you asked specifically who made the request. That's where the "I" came from.
So you had a meeting or you talked about, you discussed it with the other trustees, I'm sure, I don't know who was, was there, I don't know if any minutes were taken, I don't know what was discussed.
I never said I had a meeting, sir. Don't put that out there.
But you just said, we talked about it.
We can talk individually without a quorum. We can talk individually by phone, we can meet at Dunkin' Donuts, we can meet any kind we want, don't, don't, please don't say that we had a meeting.
You, what, you said we talked, is it we talked, that's a meeting?
We spoke.
More than, more than, more than one person?
That's not true, sir.
Two people is, yes, it is.
I can speak to a trustee without having three other trustees present.
But you just got to saying "we" discussed it.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Point of order.
So I'm just asking, point of order is not, is not valid at this point.
Mr. Mayor, have a comment?
This point, right now, I'm asking a question.
I'm gonna answer your question.
Well, if it's not anything to do with what I just answered, I'll take it.
I'm gonna answer your question.
Okay, what was, what was your answer?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we, uh, I, we, I talked to trustee Williams about, uh, this particular ordinance. I talked to trustee Gary Bell about this particular ordinance. I talked to Sherri Jazinski about this particular ordinance. I talked to trustee Todd about this particular, nobody was there except the person I missed to, uh, mention at, at that time. We, I talked to them individually. Uh, do you wanna know where we talked?
No, I'm asking, the question I'm asking is...
I asked, I talked to each one of them individually.
Why was this not, it was, it was taken off the table because of the, uh, at, at a committee meeting and it was taken off for a reason. Now you're doing, you're putting it back on to abolish and was saying at the time that we would lose a lot, um, with the lady that's here for helping us, Ms. Maggie Jar, said she needed a full-time economic development person here so she could be able to run things back and forth. It was explained at that time, it was explained in length at that meeting. At that time, the trustee said, okay, we didn't know this, at this time, we'll take it off. I wanna know what transpired to make that change that all of a sudden now we don't need that position. So I'm just asking what, because if we do take it away, we will lose her. We will lose that part of that grant that we have for her to be there to help us get other grants pertaining to certain economics and other things that has to be done here in the village, cause that's what she's here for, is to help us and bring things to the village. She needs somebody to actually be on, on the ground running and doing some of these things that has to be done. She's not getting paid by us, someone else is paying us. And the reason why it is, because we showed them the need for some of the things that we did and we showed them that we were really serious about it by putting it to a person that's full-time, that's here every day to take care of the different things that she needs to back up on, because as, again, she doesn't have a secretary, she has a person, she brings things to us, we set up meetings. I'm sure some of you guys have been to some of the meetings that, that, that have been set up. Now, when they find out that deposition, as was stated two weeks ago, or three weeks ago when this was done, that that person's not there, then we will probably lose her because now it seems like we are not serious enough about moving forward with what they have to offer. So that was the reason why you guys took it off the table and, uh, and, 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 I'm sorry, you put it on the table and tabled it. Then since that time, I just wanted to know that you guys talked about it, but I didn't get a chat, I was, no one called to say, Mayor, we're gonna take this off the table because of. And those were one of the things about appropriations also, because there's some things, not just this, that's not gonna be funded because it's already past six months. So you're saying there wasn't a meeting, everybody seemed to chime in and talked about it. Why, what, why couldn't you call a meeting, but I guess you didn't feel you had to, you know, so?
Mr. Mayor, uh, to add more clarity to, uh, your...
I'm clear.
Well, okay.
I'm clear.
Well, let me state this. One reason why the village administrator was hired is ordered, was to do economic development and that's gonna be part of his job. And we don't feel that we need, uh, economic development, that's part of the village administrator's job. Now, uh, as I understand it, the village minister, uh, village administrator is aware of what he's supposed, his duties, his role and responsibility and one of them includes the village, uh, the economic development person. So, uh...
Okay, so he's gonna be doing economic development? So that's why?
The village administrator, yes.
Okay, I'm just saying, that's, that's what he's gonna do.
Yeah.
That would've been, okay. So if somebody should've said something.
I didn't, I didn't say a name, I said the position.
That should've been, that should've been said, I didn't know that you had also, because you said that he would be doing the resources too. So I didn't know, okay.
I didn't know.
So that's the reason, um, so you, you're asking to put this and eliminate the Economic Development Director position?
Mr. Mayor, to further state what trustee Brewer said, that was actually stated when we interviewed Mr. Williams, that he would be responsible for economic development and HR with a staff to assist him. And in the past, and in the past, Mr. Mayor, you know yourself.
Oh, I know.
We have had economic development director that was, economic development that was run by a trustee along with the assistance of the mayor and the staff that was on board. Now, what trustee Brewer said was absolutely correct. The village administrator will be taking the lead with the CMAP and that is his responsibility. And that is fine, cause I did do the research and I did speak to Ms. Jar and I understand that Calumet Park is doing the same program and their village administrator has taken the lead on the CMAP program. So it is acceptable and I don't feel, I feel that stating that we're going to lose a program, I think that was stated a little bit prematurely.
Okay.
We have done our homework.
I didn't say that she did.
Okay, well, I, I spoke with her myself and I understand that the village administrator in Calumet Park does, do, does assume that responsibility, but we all have to work together, okay? And I would be more than happy to assist the village administrator or Ms. Jar at any time in doing anything that relates to economic development.
Right now, right now, we're talking about, I mean, not talking about after the fact. Right now, we're talking about this particular position. And you said staff, I don't know where staff's gonna come. I don't know, when I was doing economic development, I didn't have a staff. So I don't know, but anyway, if this is what, you're right, that we, we're, you're asking to take this off and eliminate this position? I'm sorry, to eliminate the economic development position and to put it back on the table?
I'll concede that.
Well, the next one is actually, actually asking to abolish. Okay, how, uh, I just have a problem with, with putting something back on the table that was never discussed. I'm sorry, I have a problem with asking a motion about something that was never discussed to put it back on. That's the problem I have. And for the record, that's what I, that's what I feel, but I'll entertain a motion to place the ordinance to eliminate the Economic Development Director position back on the table.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Williams, seconded by trustee Brewer. Yes, we're through with questions. Call, bro.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
No.
Trustee Jazinski?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Motion to approve the ordinance, rescinding ordinance seventeen dash zero zero nine, which is an ordinance establishing the position of Economic Development Director and abolishing the position of Economic Development Director.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Williams, seconded by trustee Jazinski. Question?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. So just a second ago, trustee Williams stated that this position is not in the budget and that's incorrect. Um, the budget that we just passed in item B, appropriations, does have a position, economic development there for like thirty-four thousand dollars. So that statement was wrong and it is in the budget as of right now.
Mr. Mayor, the position that's in the budget for thirty-four thousand is the half year that's already been expended by that position for the first six months. The Economic Development Director was in place for the first six months, now seven, because it's taking us almost seven months to prove the budget. That thirty-four thousand applies to the first six months of that person's salary in that position. So, Mr. Grant, I'm sorry, but that is right.
Okay, so I see you using that funny math again, so because...
That's not funny.
No, no, because Ms. McCoist's position, Ms. McCoist's position is right, it says...
Stop using her name, please.
Ms. McCoist's position is, is in the budget for thirty-four thousand dollars. Now, there's a new position which she will do for twenty-four thousand dollars, I believe that's what it is?
For six months.
For six months. So, again, the, the numbers are all messed up. So you, you're using a six-month salary for this position, a four-year salary for another position. Again, this is one of the many holes that was in the previous budget that was, that you, that was messed up. So are you gonna amend this part two? Because that was something else that was incorrect in the, in the budget that was presented to us.
Mr. Mayor, the funny math that Mr. Trustee Grant is referring to?
We're gonna be going back and forth.
Thank you. It's not funny math, it is what it is.
If you're gonna use adjectives, then I'm not gonna address. So...
He used the adjective.
I said, if you, we're gonna start using adjectives, I'm not gonna address it.
I apologize.
You can see how he did whatever, you said what you had to say. I said from now on, we're not gonna do that. I said from now on. So is that your question, trustee Grant?
Yeah, that's it.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
No.
Trustee Jazinski?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Motion to approve payroll and accounts payable and disbursement.
So moved. Second.
I had to. In the amount of three hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars and ninety-two cents.
Excuse me, did you read that as accounts payable and payroll together? Because it's on the agenda. What was the motion?
I'm sorry, it says, motion to approve payroll, accounts payable and disbursement.
Those are on the agenda, oh.
Two different ones.
Two different ones, I hear. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, because I still have the agenda that says A and B. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Yes. You need what? Who, okay, but, who made the motion?
I made the motion, I'll say.
Okay, trustee Todd?
Right, and I apologize because I'm here, they didn't have him out, so I...
No, I know, that's why I was going to read it. I, I... And the second by trustee Bell. Madam Clerk?
Justine Grant?
Yes.
Justine Zizik?
Yes.
Justine Todd?
Yes.
Justine Williams?
Yes.
Justine Bell?
Yes.
Justine Brewer?
Yes.
Motion, carry. Item B, motion to approve a resolution ratifying the proposed cons collective bargaining two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-one, collective bargaining agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police Labor Council.
So moved. Second.
Moved by trustee Bell, seconded by trustee Todd. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Justine Zizik?
Yes.
Justine Todd?
Yes.
Justine Williams?
Yes.
Justine Bell?
Yes.
Justine Brewer?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion, carry. Motion to approve an ordinance that amend section two dash one seventy-nine of the Village of Softwood's ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Moved by trustee Todd, seconded by trustee Juzeski. I have a question. Because I got the, I got the ordinance kind of late today, it didn't come to me. And I just have a question on it. Item B on the, does everyone have a copy of this ordinance? Everyone have a copy? Item B, for all of the employees of the village, of the village, employees shall record the starting time and ending time of their workday each day upon arriving and prior to leaving their designated work site by the method designated by their supervisor. Employees are prohibited from inputting or recording any starting or ending times of work when they are not physically present at the work site, including but not limited to using any cellular device, remote connection, email, internet, or another person to input such information. I'm not sure, I was hoping that we could discuss that, I don't know how, I think the police department can punch in with their phones, or you're saying that you're not going to have them to use their phone to punch in? And that was the question that I had, because there are some, there are some departments that do use the phone to punch in, and one of them being the police department. I don't think the fire department does, I think they just sit to the side.
Mr. Mayor, when we talked about this, it was office staff only, correct?
No, it's not, that's not what this says.
When we discussed it out here on the floor, it was office staff only. Fire department has, and police can punch in from their phones, and social public works on call.
Okay, so I'm asking, that's, my question is, public works, they have to punch in before they start work? If they come at nighttime, and anybody else, that's the part I'm asking.
The reason for this ordinance was basically for the first responders, the police department.
No, that's the first part.
That's the first part, right.
That's A, I'm not looking at A, I'm looking at B.
And I don't, I don't have a copy of the ordinance, it was a place in my box. I do have the agenda that you referred to, but I don't see the one where you said... But you said the mayor was making some changes, so that's what I wanted to make sure. Okay.
I, I just got...
So this is what it says, for every paid on-call employee in the fire department and other first responders, such as as the home security, upon receipt of a call or notification to respond to an emergency or request for assistance, the employee shall go directly to the site of the incident. That's for first responders, yes.
That's not what I said, trustee. That's not what I said, I didn't say anything about A, I understand A. You're going to make it into something else. No, I said, I'm asking about being, trustee Bell told me that, okay, that's part of A, I just wanted to make sure there's nobody else, other than the first responders, that punch in using the telephone. And that's one thing I'm asking, so I'm not sure, but that's what you're saying, that no one else that punches in. Now, your people that are salaried don't punch in. So they just come in, and that's why they're on salary. But anyone that punches in has to, to use the phone. Now, on the, on the police side, you have a person that's there that punches in, and she's not a first responder. She's a clerk. So you're saying, and has the right to punch in on the phone. So you're saying that that person has to be physically in the building to punch in? That's the question I'm asking.
Everyone who starts physically at a desk should punch in at their desk, yes.
Except for?
Salary people don't punch in.
Right.
Right, except anybody who normally has to punch a clerk.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Justine Todd?
Yes.
Justine Williams?
Yes.
Justine Bell?
Yep.
Justine Brewer?
Yes.
Justine Grant?
No.
Justine Zizik?
Yes.
Motion to approve the resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement for the provisions of environmental health inspection between State Department of Public Health and the Village of Softwood. I accept the motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Todd, seconded by trustee Williams, any questions?
Justine Williams?
Yes.
Justine Bell?
Yes.
Justine Brewer?
Yes.
Justine Grant?
Yes.
Justine Zizik?
Yes.
Justine Todd?
Yes.
Motion, carry. All right, the next one is a consent agenda. And I'm understanding that each one of these are going to be read by one of the trustees. So I'll put it out there for a motion to approve a consent agenda for MFT framework and TIF bond improvements.
I'd like to make the motion to approve a consent agenda for MFT form work and T, I mean, TIF bond improvements. Number one, a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code for the sum of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, MFT. Number two, a resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code for the sum of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Number three, the maintenance engineering services to be performed by a consulting engineer agreement for MFT funds. Number four, proposal for professional engineering service design and construction engineering, the West Tank Interior Wet Painting. Number five, proposal for professional engineering services, TIF bond improvements, soft point drive and soft trail intersection improvements, logistics center street resurfacing, soft point industrial park street resurfacing. And number six, proposal for professional engineering services, water main replacement.
Second.
Any comments? Madam Clerk?
Justine Bell?
Yes.
Justine Brewer?
Yes.
Justine Grant?
Yes.
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 Motion, carry. Before we adjourn, I forgot to mention that every Thursday, Wednesday, there will be a town hall meeting here at seven o'clock, so that'll be... Twentieth, okay, that'll be November twentieth here, Wednesday, I'm sorry, Thursday.
It's the twenty-eighth.
At seven P.M. And the last item, and this is not a rebuttal, this is not a, this is just my opinion, this is just my thought on it. I know we just passed the budget. In that budget, there was a lot of cuts, there was a lot of things that were talked about. There was a lot of, I thought maybe we've been, you know, give time to change some of the things that were done, I felt. But now I'm looking at it, and now seeing it, that some of these things that were done, were done personally. I believe, just my opinion. I have that, just like everybody else has their own opinion.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, is that on the agenda? Your personal opinion?
So anyway, I would have thought that some of the things that were, that were, were the...
Sick, everybody got to listen to his personal opinion.
Did you want to leave, or did you want to come on the way out?
Well, I can stand here and everything.
Then why, why, why would you, why would we sit there, trustee?
Why, but you're going out the door, trustee? I'm going to sit here and discuss what you babble on about.
Motion.
So anyway, I just wanted to make a statement, and that's all it was. Please don't stand at the door and make noise, trustee. Anyway, to get this over with, the position that was eliminated, yes, it was a position that was administrative assistance to the mayor, but that position also did a whole lot of other things. And if you came to the village hall at any time, you would see, basically doing more stuff than just helping myself. I would have thought that, you know, all the other things that were going on in the deposition would have been reclassified, relooked at, or redone. Obviously not. So the only thing I'm saying, I'm just making a statement that that is something that I thought, but obviously, it was not to be, that that position would have held up for a dead amount of money. It's not like it was a whole lot, not like we were breaking the bank. But the person that was doing the job was going way above what they were asked to do for a whole lot less than what they were getting, and just wanted to bring that to the board, bring it to the audience, and that's, and that's it, that's all I had to say. So at this time, I'll make a, I'm sorry, I'll just adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.